Everybody, I'm here with our county commissioner Keith Kelly. And we're gonna talk about the county, we're gonna talk about solar. But before we get in there, I want to just make a few disclaimers. First, I want to make sure everybody understands that Keith does not represent the entire commission. Right? He is one of three commissioners. And the thoughts that he shares with us today are Keith's thoughts and his thoughts alone. The purpose of this video is to have a polite discussion about the new solar project, about the things that go on in the county. And I want to personally thank Keith you to have the courage to come and do this because I think again, this is the American way.
Yep.
To me, so, so before, um. Oh, one other note, two things super important. I also want everyone to know that these regulations on solar are not regulations. They're proposed regulations, and that's a very important distinction. The commissioners have not had an opportunity to rule on them, to edit them.
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that everybody knows we are not talking about a finished set of regulations. What we're talking about is a set that's in process.
Right.
Yeah, so Keith, tell us again about you.
Sure. I'd just like to tell you guys a little bit about myself, but first I want to thank Rowdy. We've been having this conversation for quite a while. We've known each other probably twenty-five years. But we've had this conversation privately that maybe we should do this podcast and have the opportunity to, for me to share some things, for Rowdy to ask me some questions. I think it's a great idea. And I really appreciate the fact you carving out, out of your busy schedule to do this because I know you've, you've got a lot going on. A little bit about me, never saw myself running for county commission in any political office. Was encouraged by an elderly, older couple in, in my district. They asked me if I would run because they believed as a business owner, farmer, that, that I would bring some fiscal responsibility to the county. I believe I've done that. I'm sure there will be many that disagree with me, but that's okay. I've made mistakes with budgets. It's very complicated, you know, as, as commissioner. If you go into this process thinking that you're never gonna make a mistake, you're wrong. I've described it as trying to learn, uh, learn this job from day one is like drinking from a fire hydrant. But I love this process, I love the problem solving, bringing common sense solutions sometimes to problems that we have here. It's difficult sometimes to speed up government because there's three of us that sit up here and we have to have a consensus or agreement. So anyway, yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. And I, I, I just really appreciate the opportunity to sit down with you.
I do too. I think this is really the American way.
It is.
And you know, at the end of the day, Keith and I, I promise you guys, there'll be things today we don't agree on. But it's okay. It's healthy, it's actually healthy.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, and, and so anyway, I'm excited. But I want to start today with mainly the solar stuff. But I think to help the people understand, what level of oversight does the commission have at the current level of project? Right? I mean, because obviously the, the, the planning board don't just make it up.
Right.
There's some kind of guidance in there somewhere. Can you just help the people understand?
For sure.
That.
Yeah, that's, that's a great place to start. So this process started with the commissioners building a template with our attorney and other input. We had to start somewhere. We knew just shipping this over to zoning and planning would overwhelm them to start from zero, right?
Yes.
And so giving them just a template to start with, and, and it's nowhere near done. We worked on it for quite some time and then we shipped it over. And to them, gave it to zoning and planning to start the process, to go through this and figure out what makes it right for this county. I think they've done a good job to this point. Is there improvement? Hundred percent believe there is. I've been to both of the meetings recently, that, public meetings. I sat quietly and just took notes. And so they'll decide at their next regular meeting or whenever they decide to take it up, they will decide whether to make changes. That could take months. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm really am.
Yeah.
If they decide that next meeting could just pass it, it comes back to the three of us up here and it'll land on our desk. I've read through these multiple times. There are things in there that I think need to be changed. And that's just me. There are things that I didn't, hadn't thought about until listening to some folks at these last two meetings. So it, it, the process will be then, we'll look through these, we'll make changes, then we'll send them back to zoning and planning for their approval or disapproval. See how the process works? See, we got accused of not using the process. And, and, and that, it's been the plan the whole way is to use it.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't have been responsible, I don't think on our part, to try to have an attorney at every one of their meetings to develop these regs solely from there. So we tried to help because our attorney sits in here every day. It seemed fiscally responsible since he's here.
Yeah.
Not to pay him more money to be over there every other week. So that's kind of the.
Yeah, so when it goes back to them, you guys will go through. Let me just back up a little bit. So when you, when you guys get the regulations, what do you propose? Or what do you think the timeframe is for you guys to go through? Because that can't be quick either.
No, and I'm not gonna put a timeframe on it because it's gonna take as long as it takes.
Okay.
And, and you and I have had a conversation about a couple of things in there. There are some people I want to bring in when they come back to my desk. There are some people I want to come in and sit down and have a conversation with about how we can make these better. So, and, and one of those is gonna be you.
Yeah, one I'm happy to.
And so anyway, that, I'm not gonna put a timeframe on it. There, there is no reason to put a timeframe on it. It's gotta be right. I've said from day one, if, if what we produce, no one could live within, no company can live within, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Right? You understand what I mean when I say that?
A hundred percent.
Okay.
A hundred percent. And I, and I think instead of being fast, being right is more important.
It is, for sure.
And everything that I've read, at least very in the, in the early stages, you know, the company said that they weren't in a hurry either. So, you know, I think that's good.
It is.
You know, as, as far as I'm concerned. Um, so, so it goes from to you guys, then it goes back to them. So in the case that they don't agree, what happens there?
If, if they don't agree?
Yeah.
With our changes?
Yes.
Now, that's a great question. They can choose to approve them or not. At, at the end of the day, and I think I know where you're going with this, is the three people who sit in these chairs up here have the ultimate decision. So they can say, we don't approve them, they can come back here. And the commission, any commission can choose to approve them without approval from their zoning and planning. That's, they are the, they are the top of the food chain.
Yeah, and that's how it should be. Someone has to make the call.
Correct. I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen.
Of course.
I'm just saying that's how the process works. And, and if I can address one thing real quick, the whole putting this to a vote thing. When people go into the poll, polling booth and they vote for their favorite commissioner to become commissioner, they're acknowledging that the three people that sit up here have full authority to make that decision, whether it's a small decision or a large decision. Whether you like that process or not, if you don't like that process, that can be changed state level. But that's what you're giving any commission now or in the future, the authority to do.
Yeah, got it, got it. So, and I was gonna ask on, in there somewhere about taking it to a vote, but let's talk about that real quick.
Sure.
So you guys also have the authority to decide what needs to go to a vote and what doesn't. That's also part of your guys' authority. Is that correct or is that not correct?
No, that is not correct. Because if I'm understanding, you, you're saying there's nothing, because county commissioners have both legislative and administrative authority. Only elected officials that I know of even clear up through Senator federal level. They don't have those authorities. We do. And so there is nothing that we're going to, that I know of, and I don't know everything.
Of course, of course, of course.
That, that we can put to a vote, that we can say, okay, we want the public to vote on this. Unless you're gonna educate me on.
No, I'm not. I, I, I don't know, but so if I understand you right, what you're saying is that you guys can't, couldn't take it to a vote if you wanted?
No, not to my, to my knowledge, we don't have the authority to do that.
So who in Jackson County decides? I might want to spin off, but now you've got me curious.
No.
Who decides what, what gets put on the ballot?
Would, I mean.
I mean, we have a hospital that's getting, that's on the ballot for a sales tax increase, which I'd like to ask later on. But who decides?
Right, so, so let's take up the hospital vote.
Okay.
Which is raising, I guess, yeah, to back up and answer your question, the things that we can put to vote would be like the point four percent sales tax that we get and share with the other towns. That money has to be voted on, a sales tax has to be voted on by the public. But that's because the state says that's the way it's supposed to be.
Okay.
And so when the hospital came to us, we, we had to be the ones, the conduit, to reach out to the state representatives and say, okay, well, one of you sponsored this. And so somebody has to sponsor it. And then they get the information back. And then the hospital is the one who's gonna receive all the money. And it will go to vote this fall. So a sales tax, I, I guess, is, is one, the, the only thing that I know of. Anything that's, that, yeah, that, that's going to increase sales tax, I guess, would be something that, that we would put to a vote. But it's, yeah, I don't know that it's, um. It's just the way the state has it set up.
Yeah, that's odd, that, that's so crazy to me that, I mean, I, I am not prepared for this question, just to be honest with you.
Right.
But, so who in, so they're really, so that, so if something's gonna be on the ballot, that has to be a state issue? Because this, that blows me away.
That's the only thing, if you're increasing, and again, I'm not the expert on this.
Right.
Because I reach out to our state representatives. They have attorneys at the state level who guide us through these processes. And I'll touch on what were, another sales tax that we're, we're looking at later. But that's the only thing that I know of that would have to go to a vote is a. It, it, none of the zoning and planning, none of the, and again, you know, I'm, I'm not the expert on all this, but I've tried to do my research.
Keith, you have the right to be, to be wrong enough, no, it's okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm sure. Because that just blows me away.
Yeah, I, um, that's just the way this works, yeah.
I will, if we ever get a chance to do this again, I will be educated on that topic.
Yeah.
Because I am not.
And, and again, I've had to ask our attorney to do some research. I've done some research on it. I don't know of anything other than the state's sales tax if we're going to increase that because it, it involves the state, they're gonna get revenue off of it too. But the hospital deal is, I, I, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good deal to them.
Can we talk about that real, real quick?
Yeah, I don't know how much I want to go into it because I don't want to misrepresent the Hilton Hospital and, and what, what they're trying to do. And I don't want to try to quote numbers, you know, but go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
I'm open to it.
So we in America, and I don't know, this is something I am fairly educated about. And so we, we in the United States of America spend a hundred percent more per person on healthcare than any of this other, you know, countries in, in, in the world.
Right.
And in fact, it's over four trillion dollars a year, which is eighteen percent of our GDP.
Okay.
Okay, so we spend a ton. But if you look at the actual, our actual quality of care, we're towards the bottom. Right? Our average lifespan seventy-six point one years as compared to eighty-six in Japan, for example.
Sure.
And I can give you just a couple of the quick examples.
So what, just real quick?
Yeah.
Would any of that have to do with diet?
Well, it would have a hundred percent to do with diet. Okay. A hundred percent, and we could talk about the food industry too, and I'm gonna go off.
Yeah, we can, and, and, we would agree on a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I think my point is, as you know, in two thousand sixteen, you know, one of sixty-eight kids were diagnosed with ADHD, when by many studies today, it's one in ten. ADHD in twenty sixteen, a million kids were diagnosed with ADHD. By the time we get to the end of twenty twenty-five, it'd be eleven million.
Yeah.
So the point that I'm, I'm making in this is that why would we, if we're already spending more than any other country, and yet our healthcare is towards the bottom, why would we continue to invest? Why would I vote yes to continue to invest in a system that isn't doing it?
Because we have a local hospital and clinic that in my opinion is second to none. They, they are interested in, in knowing you as an individual, not just rushing you in and out. Having this hospital in this community is so vital to our older generation because they don't have to travel to the Pecan. It, it is such a blessing in this community. And I fully support it. I, I think a sales tax is a great way to generate income for it. Above that, I don't know their numbers. I do know that some of the cuts, or some, not, I'm not gonna say cuts. Some of the, the amount they're paid for Medicaid? Is nowhere near what they need to cover the cost. I mean, because you understand, and I think the audience will understand, that to bring good physicians and good nurses and good occupational therapists and speak to all those people into a small community, they have to be paid well and sometimes more than what a big town would, would do, right? And so there's probably some additional costs. I don't know that for sure.
Yeah.
But I do know that it's, it's what they're paid and there's, that, that hurts these small hospitals.
Yeah, but if they had enough money, you know, I talked about this before, they had just had enough money to renovate the entire hospital and now they're asking the population to come in with a sales tax, right?
Yeah, and, and I don't want to speak too much on that because I don't know the numbers. I do know that a lot of that was through private donation, private donation. And I believe that what that new facility is generating is paying for itself, if that helps.
Okay, so if the, if the facility is paying for itself, why do they need us to pay for it?
That wing, that wing. Yeah, so, so the way, the way I understand it, and boy, I hope the folks at the hospital don't, don't go, oh, he's not saying the right thing.
Yeah.
But that's the way I understand it. So by expanding that, it, it has given more opportunity for more services and it is paying for itself.
Okay.
But it's the rest of the hospital, and understand, before they built that, they were paying rent to somebody. Now they're not. I, I believe this is the motivation number. So I'm a firm believer in it. I, I, we, I've said this a hundred times, we are just so blessed to have that hospital and the staff that we have, and we have some really good staff.
Yeah, and I've experienced, um, my mom was in the hospital up there for a while. And they were nothing but kind. And, and, and so I'm not making a statement directed at the personnel there. They were nothing but kind. All I'm saying is I don't understand why we continue to invest in systems that continue to fail us when there's gotta be alternatives out there. You know, I don't know if you're, how familiar you are with the direct care models or any of those. I mean, I think they're wonderful.
Yeah, Dr. Lassie.
Yeah, I would much rather invest in those kinds of things than continue a process that clearly isn't working. And this is true to me to the education system, to a lot of different things. But anyway, I, I don't want to completely derail on that. So, so getting back to the solar farm, and I hate to call it a farm, it's not a farm.
Yeah.
The solar project.
Right.
So the internet's full of claims that this will be a twelve thousand acre, you know, solar project.
Yeah.
You know that, and you know that'd be millions and millions of panels.
Yeah.
Can you talk about the scope, kind of what's too big for you, kind of where you, you go on this? Because I, I have a hard time with it because on one side, Next Era said that they would need at least two thousand acres. Now they say they would need five thousand acres. And yet they've leased twelve thousand acres. Help me understand, because none of that makes sense.
So this is just me, I don't have any facts to back this up because I haven't asked Next Era this. But that's coming. I'm, I have a lot of questions that I want to ask them, but there's a time and a place when I start that conversation.
Of course.
And I believe what they use is a shotgun effect. They go out and lease everything that they can possibly lease. And then with the, whenever if there's regulation, they're gonna look at that and say, okay, where does this fit? Well, it may not fit here, it may not fit there, but we can fit it here. I've always said, uh, two thousand acres is the place to start. I went, I traveled to Iowa to see a Next Era facility being built.
Good for you.
And I drove up there and I met with one of their county commissioners. Eh, didn't get a lot of information. So I just got in the car and I drove out in the country and I found this facility. And I started pulling into people's driveway and knocking on doors and asking people, what's your experience with this? What have you seen? Has it been good, bad? You know, those types of things. I will tell you that what I saw was a very neat, clean facility. There were people who didn't like it. But then those folks who didn't like it really appreciated the fact that there were sufficient offsets and berms and trees planted. There were people who didn't care one way or the other. My, my concern is one of yours. Why was it okay to start with two thousand up there, but it's not down here? And I think, again, I don't have any numbers on this to back it up. Part of it has to do with the building of transmission lines. And so if you're gonna build out transmission lines, it's gonna cost X number of dollars. So in order to make that make sense, you would have to have X number of acres under solar. Kind of like if you're gonna build a new building, but you gotta build, you gotta build a building that's twelve thousand square feet, but you're only gonna occupy a thousand of it. It doesn't make sense to build a twelve thousand.
Right.
You gotta have enough revenue to generate. That's my guess.
So, so when you talk about transmission lines, obviously this is not gonna fit an easement. Right? And, and you know, like I'm, I live on, you know, where I live, it's, you know, twenty-five feet from them or whatever.
Right.
So, so does this mean that they're going to have to purchase lines? Or is this an eminent domain issue? How are they gonna get those transmission lines run? Do you know any of that information?
I don't. And, and I will tell you, and I will tell your listeners, I am not in favor of eminent domain in any kind. In, when it comes to transmission lines and stuff like that, I do know that there are certain times when water districts have to utilize eminent domain to serve other customers and, and get water to people. That has happened and it does happen.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm not in favor of, of that. You know, using that tool, I guess if people call it that, to get transmission lines across people. If you're not willing to allow that, and again, I've always said, I'm a huge proponent of landowner rights. If you own it, you pay the property tax on it, you should be able to do with it what you want. And if you want to let it grow up into cedar trees and watch red birds fly around, great. That's what you should be able to do.
Well, and, and much like the Lespedeza argument, until it affects somebody else, right?
Correct. Uh, that's a whole nother.
Right, right.
And again, at my level, I don't make those rules to state of Kansas. They deem what's noxious weeds.
Right. Yeah, I'm not necessarily getting into that conversation. I guess what I'm saying is, is that property rights are essential to freedom. They're the building block.
They are, for sure.
But that, that's only true if it only affects me. If I do something on my land that affects you.
Correct.
My runoff affects you, my whatever affects you. Now it's your property.
If you're dumping oil and it's running down the creek and it's getting in my pond and killing my fish, okay, now it's my problem.
That's right.
And we have a problem.
That's correct.
And that's part of what I'm hearing at these meetings. And, and I've had people say this to me before. But hearing from some folks that, how do I say this? That have experienced it, I guess is carried a little more weight with me. Okay, so, what was it, where were we at?
Yeah, so, so we're just talking about property rights and it's fucking other people. You said it surprises you.
Yeah, that, that, um, there was a lady from up in Neimahaw County that spoke. Had pictures.
Yep.
And, and I was really surprised that, I think there was some damage to somebody's fence. And there was a bill for that.
Yep.
Now, Rowdy, you and I both know, Next Era probably carries around more than six thousand dollars from pocket cash. You understand what I'm saying when I say that. I mean.
They're a big company.
It's, it's, yeah, it's change in the, in the ashtray for them.
Right.
To me, what that said to me when I heard that, and not knowing the whole circumstance because we only got three minutes worth.
Right.
Was, God, you know, if I'd have been sitting in that chair and had the opportunity, that's an easy payout.
Easy.
Easy. You know what? We're gonna take care of that. I'm sorry that happened to you. Here's your check, I'll have it for you tomorrow.
Yep.
Great way to create better public relations.
Yeah.
And, and so I chewed on that for a while. Why, why, I'm asking myself, why did that happen the way it happened? And I had a friend of mine, he goes, it's because they don't care. I went, oh, okay. And so I don't know that to be true. I'm, I'm just saying that's what he told me and it made me ponder, you know, those situations. And so it affirmed in me that these regulations have to be airtight in many, in many, uh, in, in, in a lot of places. Because if they're not, people will take advantage. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna back up five years ago, another instance that was inexperienced with Next Era. They had a haul route, I think it, don't quote me, it's twenty-three to twenty-seven miles across the north end of the county. I became commissioner, that was all done before I became commissioner. But I was tasked with, or the commission at that time was tasked with, put, bringing that haul route back to the standards it was before they came in, okay?
Okay.
They had, I think it was one point one million dollars in an escrow account. Again, don't quote me on the numbers, it's been five years, four years ago. And so I believe the way it happened is we, before the haul route started, they hired, or we hired an engineer and our road and bridge staff went out. They checked all the roads, videotaped, took pictures, all that kind of stuff, documented it. They came back in after the project was done, we documented it again. And we said, okay, here's the bill, here's what we're seeing, here's what an independent engineer is seeing. You know, Rowdy, it took us over a year of chasing lawyers with our lawyer
Yeah.
to get that with threat of, of going to, going to court and it would happen on the third floor in this building. And that, that's, I've never forgotten that.
Yeah, good.
And how easy, again, seven hundred thousand and some change is chump change.
Chump change.
It should have been, here you go, Jackson County, thanks for letting us run through your county. Here's the check. I don't get that.
Yeah.
Why? And I've never gotten an answer out of that. And so I've never forgotten that. I know there's a lot of people out there that go, oh, he's, he's in, he's gonna vote. He's where he's where he's gonna be. But they don't know me. They just don't, they, they, they make their assumptions and I'm okay with that.
Yeah, this is one of the things I'm very excited about in doing this interview and this stuff today, Keith. Because again, you and I've disagreed a lot on a lot of things, right? And it's, and it's okay, but I've always found you willing to listen, willing to consider, right? And also willing to push back, which I think is healthy.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, so, so I, you know, for that I really like. I was also concerned on the same point, you know, when we started the first meeting, there was, you know, the planning meeting, and we were there, there was a lot of people there. And when they got up and talked, they talked about, this is not about whether you want solar or not. This is about, does an individual landowner have the right to do what they want? This was their statement.
Right.
And property rights, again, only works if it works for everybody. And then when that lady got up there and started holding the picture, I'm like, that's kind of talking out of both sides of your mouth a little bit.
Yeah.
Now either that's they don't care, or it's just, and I understand this just from being in business. It's the right hand don't know what the left hand is doing.
Big company.
Big company, they just, it's little stuff, it's not important.
Yeah.
When to us here, it's very important.
But Rowdy, you've been in business and you've handled way more businesses than I have ever, probably ever will. Wouldn't it make sense to you to put somebody on the ground that can make those decisions?
Hundred percent.
It would to me.
Hundred percent.
And I'm not the sharpest pencil in the box.
Yep, hundred percent.
But it would make sense to put somebody on the ground that can make those decisions like that.
Yep.
And have the backing of the company. But it's always seems like, well, I gotta find out.
Yeah.
Well, I gotta make a phone call.
Yeah.
So I have to wonder if something happens out there. And, and I'm fully aware of grass fires, tornadoes, all those things. I, I get the concern, I really do. And again, I've been accused of not caring.
Yeah.
But I've had, I've had conversations, I started having conversations with the Delia Fire Department years ago about this. And, and to say that, to say that the commission, and this has been touted, that we don't care about the city of Delia is completely wrong.[1791.98]
Yeah.
I represent the city of Delia just like I do Hoyt and Maeda and anything else. But those conversations with the Hoyt Fire Department, the chief of the Hoyt Fire Department, I've had those conversations. Um, the chief of the, uh, Delia Fire Department, I have had those conversations. I said, look, gentlemen, you guys need to do, uh, you need to do some research on this. Start the process. What equipment do you need? Do you need a bigger building? Do you need more trucks? Do you need full-time fire protection? Do you need somebody? So put a dollar amount to those things. Again, started this a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
But nobody, I guess nobody knows that, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I actually had, um, number ten, one of the questions that I had on my list. Sorry, no, no, this is great, this is, but let's just roll with it, it's good. That the, that in my experience with the residents of Delia, which isn't a lot, I don't get down there. It's, it's who comes to the meetings and writes, understand that. But that they don't, they feel kind of ignored and, um, not representative. And I was gonna ask you, what do you think that the county can do to change that perception? Because I don't believe the commission doesn't care.
So.
I do not believe it.
So I guess I would hope that people recognize the amount of money that we have spent in that area on bringing up roads. And I'm gonna, if it's okay, I'm gonna give you a couple of examples. So, um, Melody Mattia down at, down at Delia, she called me up and, I think it was Melody, and said, a few years ago, the roof on our community building is, is leaking and we can't, we don't have enough money to finish this project. Would you be willing to donate some money to help us get through there? And they were gonna try to do some things. I said, Melody, what's the number? It was twenty-four thousand, maybe in some change. So I got with the other two commissioners and I said, look, Delia doesn't have ball teams, okay? We don't give them that twenty-five hundred dollar stipend like we do, uh, Hoyt, Maeda, some of the other, uh, ballparks, they're all over, you know, Holton, all over. We give them a stipend out of parks and rec funding. How is that funding derived? It's through alcohol tax. And we have to break that up into thirds. We have to do a third to, um, if you're an alcoholic and we need intervention or whatever, a lot of times we use the sheriff's department or different places. Um, school districts, if they have dare programs, any of those kinds of, we donate that money to them. But part of it can be used for parks and rec. We don't have parks, but we know our cities, our incorporated cities have a lot of them. So I said to these folks that, my counterparts, I said, look, we haven't given them any money for years because they don't have ball dunks. Let's write them a check for the full amount.
Yeah.
And we did.
Yeah.
But it's like, well, you guys don't care, but we do.
Yeah.
I've tried to work with the city of Delia and help them figure out ways with their, their water situation.
Yes.
They're in dire straits.
Yeah.
But part of it falls on their city plant, city, uh, commission. I can't do it all, but I've given them as many suggestions as I possibly can. I've tried to connect them with people that can help because I, I do care. I mean, water's important. Um, I will tell you that I met with a farmer down there, uh, several years ago. And he says, Keith, I can't get down this minimum maintenance road because the cedar trees have grown together. I tried to drive down it with my pickup and it bent my mirrors in.
Yeah.
I go, thank you, I get it, I, I, I get it. So the first thing I did was came back and I talked to our road and bridge department. I said, we need to take care of this. Well, their idea was to send about six guys down with chainsaws and dump trucks. They go, uh-uh, that's not productive in my world. So productive is to spend, I think we spent forty-six thousand dollars on a piece of equipment to go on the end of a hydro hole where one to two people can go down. And now they can be ten times more productive than guys with chainsaws. And we've, we've spent a lot of time down there cleaning up minimum maintenance roads, shaving that back to fence lines. Seems like a good use of money, in my opinion.
I would agree, forty-six thousand dollars won't buy you a guy for a year.
No, it won't.
No, I mean, so.
Especially when you throw in health insurance.
No.
So it, it's things like that. It's, it's roads, it's putting gravel on roads, taking care of those roads. And I'm sure there's plenty of people out there that go, but the problem is, a lot of times, people, the only road people wanna complain about is the one in front of their house. I get that, I do, nobody wants to drive through potholes. But we have to look at, where do we get the biggest bang for our buck with our gravel and our, and our guys? Um, they are gravel roads. I'll tell you, just in the, in, in the year twenty-five, Rowdy, we've had two increases on the price of gravel. Kicks me off. I mean, are you kidding me? Two increases? You know, so where do we get that money? So one of my proposals to, to get more money, so the, the taxpayers necessarily aren't having to pay through ad valorem tax, is to take that point four percent, point zero four percent sales tax that we're currently receiving. So right now we get that and each incorporated city in the city of Holton receives a portion of that. And each incorporated city gets a portion of that. But if we increase that one tenth of a percent and we designate it for nothing but gravel and why it wasn't done this way from the beginning, I don't unders, I don't know. Uh, but we can increase that by about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month. That's huge because now we don't have to increase that, uh, rock budget over a period of time, years, and we're gonna generate more revenue and be able to haul more gravel. Cause that's, at the end of the day, that's what we have to do. We have to put gravel on roads. Blade operators do the very best they can with what they have on their road, but it's, it's expensive.
Yeah, well, I've, I've bought a lot of gravel.
So you know.
I know, it's, it's super expensive. And I'll tell you that, um, I'm, and you know this, you know, I've talked about this. I am a much more in favor of sales tax than I am of property tax. Because at least then I get to choose.
So I asked, I think I may have asked our clerk or Linda, maybe, what percentage of that gets paid by people who don't live in this county, just traveling through? And they're guessing, again, don't, don't come back and, you know, hate me for this. But I think it's about thirty percent would be paid for by out-of-county people.
Yep.
It's kinda like a, a Kansas Turnpike Authority. You know, the majority of that's paid for by people who are just traveling through the state. And you get a really good highway to drive on.
Yeah.
So to me, it's, it's a good way to generate some revenue. Um, I know that we'll get some pushback from the incorporated cities. Hoyt, Maeda, Whiting, Delia, uh, Dennison, all those places are gonna go, but we want our fair share. But this is a way to improve around those cities. And I think if we can improve around those cities, that's the right way to go. And that's what I was elected to do, is to try to make those decisions.
Yeah, again, I would support sales tax again, but it's, for me, it's in lieu of, you know, whatever we could do from a property tax perspective, because it's such a hard thing to know you'll never own your land. You rent it from the government.
It's the way it is.
Right. Um, and again, you and I've had this conversation a million times.
We have. I don't like property taxes anymore than anybody else. I don't like writing that check. But I know that if we don't all share it equally in some way, um, where do we, how do we pay for services? When somebody can come and sit down in that chair and tell me how we're gonna pay for those services in another way, I'll be all ears.
Yeah, so, and again, I didn't plan on getting here, but this is, this is a good, a great, a great topic to talk about.
I told you we'd talk about.
Yeah, it's all good, it's all good. So if I went down, let me back up. So, so you get, the property tax is a percentage, right? Air, all taxes are, are some form of a percentage. Which means when times are really good, more money is made. When times are really bad, less money is made, right? Simplistically speaking.
Well, dive in a little deeper on that because.
Sales tax, when I have a lot of money, I'm buying more things.
Sure, for sure.
So taxation is, it's not, you're not.
Not on ad valorem tax, not on property tax, so.
Yeah, but you're not getting a flat rate. You're getting a, um, percentage on the value of.
Oh, correct.
Right, so you're getting a percentage of. So if the value of homes go up, taxes go up.
Correct.
Right, you get, you get all of these kinds of things. If, if, and I've heard the argument, this is probably something you and I are gonna disagree on, it's okay, it's okay, buddy, okay? It's, it's all right. I've heard the, I've heard the argument that, yeah, well, but costs are up. You say gravel's up, you say all of these things are up, but they're up for us too.
They are.
And at the end of the day, how is it? If, if I walked into Cecil's, Cecil Kay's and I forcefully took a loaf of bread because my family was hungry, is that acceptable?
No.
Okay, so then why is it acceptable for the county to forcibly take my property because they say they have a need? I have to live within my means.
We're not taking your property, you're having to pay a fee for services.
Which is my property. My money is my property.
It is, but how else? So tell me, since you're sitting in that chair, tell me how, tell me how we pay for law enforcement? Tell me how we pay for fire protection? Cause I'm gonna walk through the things that we have in this county. We don't have a lot of fluff in this county. We have senior citizens building down here. We have noxious weed, we have recycling, we have a road and bridge department. We have a sheriff's department. And then we have the infrastructure of this building. Employees who, uh, work in the treasures and all the different departments that are needed. So tell me how we generate that revenue to make payroll and to offset and to pay for gravel and cost of equipment.
Okay, so I can make the same argument. When I don't have the money at home, tell me how to generate it for buying my propane. Tell me how to generate it for food to feed my kids. At the end of the day, I have X coming in and I have to work with an X.
Right.
So, so I think at the end of the day, I don't understand why taxes ever have to go up. Set a percentage, it's of the county and work within those means. I don't see what's so complicated about that because I have to do it every day.
Right. Because we don't control, um, how do you, okay, so if, if I'm gonna give any of my, any of the employees, they're not my employees, they're, they're county employees. So how do we give more, how do we give a, 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 an increase, a pay increase, a cost of living? Or whatever that may be to an employee? That's just one example. But if we stay exactly where we are, if we're getting ten dollars in, but stuff keeps going up and there are services that we have to provide, how do we, how do we generate that revenue? We, the only way we can generate revenue is through property taxes. And then there's another side of it where we get, um, highway tax money and we get, there's other incomes that come in. But one of the biggest things is through ad valorem tax. So how do we generate that an additional amount? So I don't control, the county doesn't control property values.
Yes, I know.
Would you agree?
I know this.
Okay, so how do you think, why do you think property values go up?
So actually, um, I don't know that we, you really want me to spin on this conspiratorial thing, but I'm happy to answer it.
But, I, I think. From the way I understand it, it's because if, if, if property tax, if the value of your home is set because a light home down the road, square footage, whatever, uh, sells for a crazy amount of money, those are gonna drive property values up.
Yes.
Agree?
Agree.
I don't control that.
No.
Everybody wants to sell their property at the highest amount they can on the day they wanna sell it.
Of course.
And, and I don't control that. What I control is how much we raise the mill levy based on that.
Correct.
And, but Rowdy, we have to provide services. So you talked about your family. So in my family, if, if things are hard and I can't, I can't afford to buy a, a brand-new car, I don't buy the car. I don't buy a car.
Yes.
I have the choice to do that.
Yes.
But I don't have the choice as a commissioner to not send guys out in a, a, a blade or a dump truck. And you, I, I hope that you would understand that, that because we have a small maintenance department, we choose to buy new equipment, for the most part, blades, dump trucks, those types of things. Because the maintenance costs is less. I put a lot of thought into that. It, it, what's the cheaper way to go? Is it to buy used equipment and then have to maintain it? You know, then you gotta hire a mechanic and to hire, you know, a good mechanic's gonna be crazy amount of money or multiple, we have really good mechanics out there. But to maintain used equipment on the amount of roads and the amount of, when it comes to how much gravel these guys haul every day, these men and women, and how many roads they try to get over, um, it just, from a cost point, it makes sense to use new equipment. And new equipment has gone up a bunch. We are required, so if we're required to continue these services, we've got to have additional revenue.
Okay, except, again, you made my point for me. If you can't afford the car, you don't buy the car.
Don't have that luxury.
I mean, it's.
I don't have that luxury.
Well, you do though, I mean, I think some.
I do, but does it make sense?
The county has to live within its means, just like I do. When times are great, we should be stacking money away, right? Knowing that there's gonna be a recession and eventually, you know, the cycle, we, we go through all these things.
Okay.
Whatever it is, but.
And what did we do this year? No mill, no, no increase.
Correct. Uh, but, but again, I don't see why you would ever increase it because to me, you're getting a percentage, but. And, you know, and it is what it is, I live in my means. I know, right, this is why I said we won't agree on this point.
We can argue this, so I, tell me how ten years from now, if we didn't raise.
Ten years from now, the housing values are more? Ten years from now, the incomes are more?
We have to be revenue neutral, no, no, no. We don't get, doesn't matter, if your property goes up thirty percent, what you're saying, live within our means. I mean, we could leave our mill levy at the same, but if property values go up, then we're gonna generate more income. But what we did, what we did this year was, we lowered the mill levy so we're revenue neutral. So are you saying we should be revenue neutral every year? Or we should live with, when you say we live within our means, what do you say?
What I'm saying is that whatever the percentage that is needed to run a county, whatever that, whatever that is, on, uh, the percentage of a property value, that should be the percentage. And the county should be forced to live within its means. I mean, I, I wouldn't lower or raise it. Now, now, back me back up, before I say that.
The mill levy.
Yeah, yeah, before I say that, I think property tax is egregious. I think there's gotta be other ways for me to lose my house, but we're not gonna win that, so.
No, we're not.
We're not.
So, so yeah, your, your point is, I, I think what I'm hearing from you is, if we, if we wouldn't have raised the mill levy, if we'd have left the mill levy exactly what it was last year, we would have generated more money. Is that okay?
But last year, you guys raised it.
We did.
Right, so what I'm talking about is.
Remember how much?
Is, no, it's.
Been a while. Half percent.
Okay.
And you don't remember why?
No.
To give raises.
Okay.
Cost of living.
So, so let's talk about that.
But, but before we go there, before we go there, are you okay with, cause I think this is really important and I'd be interested to know what your listeners think. Are you okay with leaving the mill levy exactly where it is? But if, if property values go up, we're getting, so one mill, uh, don't quote me on this number, a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars is what it generates, okay? Something like that. Um, if next year that's a hundred and seventy thousand and we leave the mill levy exactly where it is, are you okay with leaving the mill levy exactly where it is? Um, cause that's taking a percentage of what you're.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a, it's a short end question only from that. I mean, my short answer would be yes. Okay, that'd be my short answer, but, but again, I think property tax i- is a horrible thing and, and, and for someone to, to be threatened with losing their property by force, by the way, um, is ridiculous, in my opinion, in every stretch of the imagination. You know, I've paid for my property, it's paid off. I worked my tail off.
For sure.
I ate ramen for nine years to make sure I could be debt-free.
And I love that, I love to hear those stories.
Except I don't own it, it's owned by, by, I was gonna say you guys, but that's not really fair, but.
To me, it's more you're paying rent, I guess, for services.
What happens if I don't?
You're paying, you're paying for those services, no, I.
What happens if I don't pay, Keith?
Right, it's gonna go to a tax sale.
That's right, you're gonna take, the first thing that's gonna come is my property's gonna lose, I'm gonna have a fine. The second thing I'm gonna lose is my liberty and then ultimately my life if I try to defend it.
Yeah.
And so I can't go do it at Cecil Kay's, but it's perfectly acceptable for the county to do it by force.
And give me another way. I didn't send county.
I know, I know, I know, I know, I know.
You know, that's the way, that's the, I mean, it's the same thing with federal taxes. Do you believe in paying federal taxes and income tax?
Um I actually think income taxes unconstitutional, if you're honest with you, so.
Again, right, so if somebody can give me a way that that other than ad valorem tax property, charging property taxes, um I mean, is that raising the sales tax to thirty percent? I don't know what what that is. I'd love, there's a whole nother piece to this property tax thing um happening down south in the southern end of the county. I don't know how many people are aware of it. That that property is being purchased and I'm probably gonna get land based into this. But doggone it, I think it's important that people understand that that there are other pieces to this that we, the three of us, have to deal with. And they're not, they're not warm and fuzzy uh uh conversations. But that piece down there where property is being purchased outside uh in in our county, outside the bounds of the reservation, and then we never get any tax off that ever again. Fuel sold, state doesn't get any highway tax. I'm not saying it's wrong for them to do that because that's the way the system's set up. I'm saying the federal government should be reimbursing us for some of that.
So how much of the roads do you guys maintain? How much of the, I mean, how much of the services actually go there?
Sure, um we believe that it's.
We're talking about the reservation down there.
Right, we believe and and again, don't hate on me, it has nothing to do with the members of the tribe. It has nothing to do with them. They are well within their bounds, and I've said this a thousand times. To do what was set up by the federal government for them to do, great. All I'm saying is, I believe the federal government didn't see this intention or didn't see this consequence and what it's doing to our county. So every time a piece of ground is taken off the tax roll, somebody has to make that up because we were getting taxes off of it. That's all I want people to understand. I'm not, yeah, again, it's it's not.
Again, but the question, I think the question we have to answer is how much actual services does Dax County provide the tribe?
Any services that you you have privy to, they do.
Okay, so you guys are plowing the roads, you're doing all those, graveling the roads, all those things.
They took over a certain percentage of the gravel roads down there. Um we still have some, but I'll give you an example. Right now, there's a bunch of bridges that are failing. It's gonna cost us forty thousand dollars to have an engineer and these are all inside the bounds. We're gonna have to pay forty thousand dollars to have these inspected and determine what's wrong with it. Where are we gonna come up with forty thousand dollars we didn't budget for? And then some of those bridges are over a million dollars to rebuild. Where are we gonna come up with that? You and I are gonna have to figure that out. And again, I didn't I didn't plan on going down this road, but there are, those are pieces that people don't understand that affect taxes and affect revenue.
True.
So I want people to understand that. And again, it has nothing to do. I believe we have, we've tried to have a good relationship uh with our tribal uh council. Um you know, I think they're doing some great things. I'm all for the truck stop down there.
Yeah.
As long as the federal government will go, hey, you know what? I see, you know, our law enforcement's still gonna have to go down there where there's when there's an issue, right? If there's an issue down there, Tim's gotta go down, send somebody down there.
Yeah, and I again, I I'm not educated enough on it to know how it works, but it but if the county is spending taxpayer dollars to maintain whatever it is.
Right.
Safety, security, roads, whatever, there should be tax.
This building, senior citizens.
There should be taxes there to cover that.
Correct, and I'm not, I'm not looking for it from them.
Yeah.
I'm looking for it from the federal government because the federal government is the one that set this up. Pretty simple.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I I'm sure you've noticed um all the push around the country about eliminating property taxes and income taxes, and it's going on everywhere.
It is, yeah.
I mean, so have you guys done any talking about preparing for that? Because that push is coming.
To the extent that, okay, again, I've said this a hundred times, where does that money come from? How do we generate that? Nobody has, nobody has sat down and said, here's how you can generate that without charging property tax.
So are there any services you guys provide that you aren't mandated to provide by the state?
Mandated, no.
So like mowing the 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 graveyard and the cemeteries is required?
We don't, we don't.
You guys don't do any of that?
We don't do that.
Oh, I didn't know that. I thought you did.
No, cemetery districts are their own taxing unit.
Okay, so but I do pay taxes as I see on my sheet.
You do to that that taxing entity.
Okay.
So cemetery districts, see, that's the thing, we get the bad rap because when a fire district, they're their own taxing entity right there. They raise it, we collect it, we get blamed for it. School districts, another another one.
Yeah.
We have great school districts in this community. But but some of them have huge mill levies for their infrastructure. You 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 know what I get told? Oh, well, they they deserve it. I'm like, okay, do you want roads and bridges and do you want a sheriff to show up when you call nine one, nine one one? Do you want an ambulance? I mean, so we pay uh to tech out here, the ambulance service. Again, don't quote me the numbers, it's over half a million dollars, six hundred thousand, whatever it is. Um and contractually, we were required to give them a raise this year out of that. That wasn't budgeted for.
Now, if if you were required, why wasn't it budgeted for?
Great question, because when we were doing budget, we were trying to do everything we could do to not where where we looked everywhere where we could cut because we didn't wanna raise the mill levy. We wanted to be revenue neutral. When we were doing the budget, we were trying to cut anywhere we could. And we had said all of our appropriations, we weren't gonna give anybody a raise. But in hindsight, I wish we wouldn't have done that. And I'm gonna, again, I'm not perfect, of course. Um it was a mistake that we shouldn't have, we should have budgeted for it. Um it's fifteen thousand dollars. So we looked at some money that we have. We're required to keep X number of do- dollars cash um in in reserves. We have uh emergency funds. If something would happen, you know, you know what can emergency funds are for and why we're why we should have those. Um and so we were able to take some of that money and pay that. We also got, after the budget was set, we expected a small increase in health insurance. We did not, we did not anticipate a seventy five thousand dollar increase in health insurance. That's frustrating because I believe they could have that information to us before budget is finalized, but we we always get it. So we sent a letter to him saying, hey, look, you gotta do this. Now, they'll probably want it up, throw it in the trash. But we were looking for every place we could cut to make us revenue neutral this year, live within the means that we had, right? We cut two hundred thousand dollars from the gravel budget. So it's 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 things like that 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 we have to do, that we have to deal with.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that it that it's easy or any of those things, Keith. All I'm saying is, if I can't afford a car, I don't get to buy a car, just the way it is.
Right.
And and then for for the for the state to be able to or the county to be able to come and forcefully take my property is just to me so hypocritical in this country that, I don't know, we just play by different rules and I think that that's sad and I think that that we as a community should stop.
The next time we get together and we have another one of these, I want you to give me some ideas on how we can change that.
Yeah.
I I would love to hear those.
Yeah.
Because I've not yet heard a a an idea of how we can set this up and how we can do this.
But you guys don't really have the power to change a lot of it either, right? A lot of this comes from the state, so it would be kind of a I don't know that we would make any ground, just so you talk about property values, which is which are are not objective in any way. I mean, it's some arbitrary person is doing this, right?
Right, the state legislature is the one that would have to change this, not us. Um I I again, I would love to be able to figure out a way to do that. But we don't, I think I was trying to tell you, we don't have a lot of fluff in this community. Uh we don't have parks, so only if you wanna call it a park that we have is Banner Lake. But guess what? We have such a good administrator out there, he's almost to the point where he's self sufficient. Isn't that cool? I mean, he's generating and he has done some wonderful things out there to generate revenue, to hold his costs down. And he's about to the point where he could be revenue neutral. And it's a great addition to this community. People can go out there and do whatever. So those, if you wanna call that fluff, that's fluff. But we're, you were asking about mandates. I think we have, there are twenty seven, don't quote me on this, twenty three to twenty seven different things that the state of Kansas mandates that we do. I'm not a fan of revenue neutral, but they force us to, if we don't, if we're not revenue neutral, then we have to spend between eight and ten thousand dollars in mailings out to you and to me to say, we're not gonna be revenue neutral. And then we're, and and to me, that's just a waste of money. Now, they paid for it for a couple of years, now it's our responsibility. You know, you can come, we we put together meetings where people can come and visit and talk about early enough that we can still make changes. This year was a better turnout.
Yeah, there was a lot of engagement.
There was a lot, but you know how many showed up the year before?
None.
And and so we try to provide those opportunities um where people can can share their concerns about the budget so that we can have time to make some changes. Um but noxious weed, we're required to have it. Recycling, we're required to have it. But I'm telling you, we've done a good job of hosting that for other counties where they don't have it. Um so that we can generate some revenue. Our landfill down here, Ed does a great job down there. And cause he's managing it ninety percent of the time with with our public works, yeah, with our public works director. But they do a really good job and that place is generating revenue, more than what it's costing. Um most years. Uh they do a good job of looking at those things. So there are the senior citizens, they have, I think it's one mill that is, goes directly to them. Tell me where else we would cut, cause you talked about cemetery districts, fire districts, they're all doing their own budget.
So why why do we tax the citizens to mow a cemetery? I mean, what, let me make back, I'm gonna say it a different way.
Yeah, I didn't.
How how is it that back, go back to the nineteen forties or nineteen fifties, we still had roads.
Yeah.
Cemetery still got mowed. It was usually an old guy who's retired out there. What changed?
Yeah, I I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know what the progression was. I don't know if they've always been a taxing entity. I don't know if that was changed at some point. But yeah, whatever happened to volunteers?
Right.
So I don't know what changed. I don't know at what point it changed, maybe it's always been this way, that that the fire districts, the cemetery districts had the authority to tax. That's not something I dictate.
Yeah.
But we have, we're required to collect all that tax and it goes back out. Um you know, uh my thought is volunteers. You know, what, where is that, where is that spirit of volunteering? You know what? We don't need to hire somebody to mow that cemetery. I'll take part of it. This guy will take part of it. Those kinda things. Have we lost some of that in this this country?
Oh, yes.
For sure. I think we have. I I think that spirit of volunteering to a certain extent, um volunteering to do something when nobody's gonna see it and nobody's gonna give you a pat on the back. You're doing it because it's the right thing to do, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think um this is because of social media, lots of reasons. We don't have personal relationships like we're used to, community isn't. I mean, there's a lot of things I think that we can go into that and I think it's sad. Um you know, to do that, but you know, what's interesting is you talk about Banner Creek being revenue neutral and maybe at some point will create a profit. You talk about the um landfill, right, making money on on the payment, so maybe this is about the only way you deal with it is through economic development, which is gonna, right?
So so you wanna talk about economic development a little bit?
Well, we're here, man.
Okay. We can get back to solar, cause I know it's important. It's important to this community. I don't think it's the most important thing in this community. Cause it's not our savior, it's not the thing that's gonna save us.
Right.
I think economic development is one of those pieces in, and I'll speak to my district. The southern third of the county is ripe for people moving into it and building high quality um homes because and again, I'm just speaking for our district. We have excellent school with capacity. We have excellent water with capacity. Those are things that communities struggle with. But um I know that the school district and the water district has done an excellent job of looking out twenty years to twenty five years in the future. So in the, down in our area, they've 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 got capacity for growth. I simply asked if zoning and planning could look at what's being done right across the county line. Do you realize how much building is going on in Shawnee County on the county line? Huge amount.
Yeah.
So why can't that happen in our area? But got a huge amount of pushback because people, and and these were, we, these were quotes from individual, individuals that I bought my place and I don't want somebody building next to me.
That's not how property rights works, man. That's not how property rights work.
That's right. If you don't want somebody building next to you, buy the land. And so it was simply to give, cause there's a lot of people out there that don't want twenty acres. They want three acres with two hundred and fifty foot of road frontage. Makes sense, right?
Yep.
And we're close enough to Topeka, they have, there's wonderful jobs, they they travel back and forth. They don't mind. Now that we have a great highway, they can travel back and forth, twenty minutes to be in Topeka, twenty five minutes to be about anywhere in Topeka, right?
Yep.
But it got a huge amount of pushback. Okay, so they didn't, they didn't go anywhere with it. I would love to see that. That's gonna generate real money because the more homes we have, the more it distributes the tax load, right?
Yes, and and we we built a lot of new homes and last time you and I spoke about it, you said, and you'd be surprised, it's not that much money. I mean, so.
In the amount, in the amount of homes that we have built, we haven't built, it's not like you're 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 building um five hundred homes a year.
Right.
I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen, but it's one, it's a lot of small pieces when put together makes um a big deal.
Yeah, but correct me if I'm wrong, there's nothing that stops them from doing that today. They just have to come and get a variance. They have to come and have a conversation with the commission, right?
Not with the commission, with the zoning.
Okay, with zoning, and then they can go and build a development, right?
I want, I'm not talking about developments, I'm talking about just individual. And and there is some hoops that have to go through. I'm in favor of simplifying the process. That's my, that's my thought on it. How do we simplify this so that if Rowdy uh is three miles outside of Hoyt and the guy's got a eighty and he wants to sell off all the frontage across it, he could buy it. He could buy those three acres, he could build a brand new house and those are generating more revenue.
Yeah, I'm probably the oddball in this in that I think property rights should be absolute. And at the end of the day, if somebody on eighty acres wants to divide it into five acres, it's not only is it not the mission, the the it's not the um mission of the commission or anybody else, that's their right and they should be able to do it. And should not be infringed upon because that's property rights and your property rights end at the end of your property. And I mean, so, and I know that will not be popular with some of my friends. I will hear about that, but but I'm absolutely.
And and that's okay to hear about it and I listened, but at the end of the day, they own the property. And and I would like that commission.
Well, they rent the property.
I I would like the zoning.
You guys, they rent the property from the government. Go ahead.
That's what I like about you. You're gonna get a dig in every once in a while, so. Sure. Um I would like the commission to take that up again.
Yeah.
And I would like to figure out, okay, maybe it's a three mile radius around an incorporated city.
Yeah.
Maybe that makes more sense, okay? But in order to grow these communities, we have to have housing. Um we have to have housing for elders that are wide doorways, all those kinda things. Um so my goal is to simplify the process for the community. The the people who are wanting to live in this community. Take up a thing that you said here, here while about about zoning. I talked about this in our last meeting. But I wanna simplify the way we look at buildings that are being done. You know, there's like three hundred buildings that were picked up from our software.
I have that on my list to talk about, actually.
Perfect. That were picked up by our software. I know there are some folks out there that don't like the software, but understand that software saves us from hiring a full time employee, which saves the county money.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not, it's not perfect. You still have to have an individual, a human look at it, make those determinations, physically go out and look at it. Those types of things. But I wanna simplify it. There's some question. If you put it on skids and then it's it's not taxable, you know, those kinda things. But that's not the truth. It should be, if it's on skids, it should become personal property, which is taxed at almost thirty percent, but it's just not being done. And so we're gonna, I wanna look at, how can we simplify that? Because you talked about, I shouldn't have to get a building permit for a four hundred square foot chicken house.
Right, I agree with that.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
So, okay, what's the number that we raise that to that makes sense so that we can simplify the process? And then we just, any, any building is required to have a building permit. Not so that we can come inspect it and all that, cause we don't do that. What we do is be able to get it on the tax roll in some form because now we're going back to taxes. If everybody is sharing in the load, it's an easier load to carry. Would you agree?
A hundred percent.
Okay, and and when people, and there's a thousand reasons why people don't get building permits. I get it. Mistakes are made. You you start building, you don't even think about it. But when when you're asked to come in, uh in in. But when, when you're asked to come in, uh, and, and correct that, come do it. And we gave people a grace period. I said, hey, look, let's give people a grace period where they can come in and take care of that and there's no, no fee, because ag buildings, there's no fee for a ag building.
Yes, so double fine on zero is still zero. Right, that's silly. Well, but I wanna talk about this a little bit. It's not.
Yeah, a double fine on, yeah, there's no fine. But, but what it does is it gives those buildings on the tax roll so that we can collect tax. I'm not, I mean, people think, oh, I'm gonna hide it. You're not gonna hide it. And again, it's, it's that each of us pulling a little bit more on the rope and, and helping pull the county down the road. It becomes easier for those, everybody.
So why don't you guys just go to anything under four hundred square feet, not taxed, everything over is done and be done with this stupid stuff? Because again, I think it's pretty silly to come to you guys and say, hey, can I have a permit? I wanna build a chicken coop. I mean, it's kinda silly.
And, and, and I agree with you and that's the conversation we're gonna have. We had it last week. We're gonna continue down that path as long as I can get support from the other two, which I don't, I'm not saying they won't. I, I think there's some changes that we can make there that are gonna make sense, again, to simplify the process.
Because, because the majority of those three hundred buildings you talked about were temporary buildings, according to the current definition.
Right, and, and but what should those buildings be taxed at? Personal property, which is higher than permanent. So we just, we, not permanent, but just as structures. So the lower amount, eleven or twelve percent, whatever that is, that's what it would be taxed at. Wouldn't you rather have the lower amount?
I would.
If you had your choice?
Well, of course, of course I would. Well, I'd prefer not to pay any tax. But, but yeah, I'd prefer to have the lower, but you know, I don't think it's as simple as just coming in to get a building permit, because I've done this a whole bunch of times. I come in and then they say, okay, here, we'll do the building permit. What's your estimated material? I don't know. I'm gonna build it out of scrap, I'm gonna build it up. Okay, so if you're gonna do that, I want you to go down to Menards, waste their time, right, which is what we're doing. We're wasting their time. Okay, and if the owner of Menards found out that, that the county was directing us to do that, they probably wouldn't be happy. But we're gonna go down there and waste their time for something I'm never gonna use anyway? Why does, why does it even matter? If you're gonna come out and measure it anyway? Why, why do we go through all of these legislative hoops when they don't mean nothing? Please tell me.
I'm not gonna speak completely for, for what is done in the appraiser's office, because I, I don't always understand the ins and outs. I don't know every department and every in and out. I have a broad view. But it's to help determine the value of it. But I had this conversation the other day in chambers here that, okay, if, if I decide to build a house out of, out of used lumber that I have, I, I'll just put a value on it and say, I had three hundred dollars worth of lumber here. That should be good enough, right?
I think so.
And if somebody said, well, don't you wanna make sure they're building it right? No, I don't care. If Rowdy wants to build a shack out of pallets and a tarp.
So be it.
And it blows down in the first windstorm, I don't care what he does, as long as you're not hurting your neighbor.
That's right.
I, I, I really don't. Um, in Shawnee County, it's different. They come out and do inspections, their, their, their process is different. But I wanna take a look at some of these things, again, so that we can simplify the process for people who are wanting to do it. And I guarantee you, Rowdy, we can simplify the process and there'll be a hundred different views on how we should do that. And there will be people that won't agree with it.
Of course.
But at the end of the day, that's what we're put here for, is to try to, try to make those decisions. And, and, and I wanna get, I'll get input on it. And, uh, you know, I've already gotten input from you.
Yeah, yeah. But you, but I, I just kind of talking, and respectfully, kind of talking out of both sides, because on one side you say, we don't determine the value, and the other side you're saying, we're saying, go down to get estimates so we can better determine the value. I mean, isn't that kind of?
It is.
It's kind of, I don't think that's really a fair statement, you know, it either was one or the other, right?
We gotta, we gotta be able to value it in some way.
Of course.
And so it's a process.
But if, if you guys don't value it, why do you have to be able to value it?
We have to be able to put numbers in of what, what was spent on it.
So you guys do control the value.
I don't say we control the value, we put, we put down whatever, if, if you're gonna build a building and you come in fill out a building permit and you say it's gonna cost sixty thousand dollars to build that, um, I believe that determines some of what your building permit cost is.
The building permit cost. Okay, so now what we're talking about is we want you to go to Menards or whatever and get these so that we assign the appropriate permit cost. Not the appropriate value for taxation.
Right, yeah.
Huge distinction.
I, if I'm misspeaking, again, I don't do this on a daily basis. And, and so I have a, a knowledge of what goes on there, but that's why we have professionals up there that are handling that. My job as a commissioner is to look at it from a, a hot, a, 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 a level and go, how can we facilitate a more, more pleasant and a, a, a better way to do it? Um, through conversation with our, our professionals that run that office. Because we have some great people that work up there and they, they work their backsides off, taking care of this. It's something more required to happen.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you, Kate has been nothing but professional with me.
For sure.
Justin, nothing but professional. I have nothing negative to say about the department. I, my real point is there is no way there's any law out there that requires us to go waste somebody else's time, even we know we're gonna build it ourselves.
You know Justin, so shout out, shout out to him.
Yeah, Justin's a stud.
He's moving, he's moving to another office. And, and I wish him well, I think, you know, anytime somebody can improve themselves, that's a good deal.
I, I, my interaction with him, he knew the rules, he knew what he could do, what he couldn't do. I'm all in.
But, but yeah, it, it's a process. My control over that process is how can we simplify that? How can we make changes to it? So that it's easier on the taxpayer, the individual moving into this community to make, and we've made some changes. It's still not perfect. And it probably won't be long after I'm gone. It's a process of, of continuing to look and evaluate. That's what, that's my job.
Yeah, and I think it can be simpler and I think, again, I'm opposed to a lot of the taxes, but in the end, we're not gonna get rid of them. Right? I mean, this has to come from something far above Jackson County.
Thank you for admitting it.
Well, of course, I mean, you know, a-again, I'm, I, we can go round and round and round about it, it doesn't really matter, we're not gonna get anywhere on it.
Right. What you got next?
Yeah, so let's, let's continue to talk about solar a little bit, because I've just got so many, so many questions in here. And what I'm gonna try to do is, is help, uh, use you to gotta help answer some of the questions.
Sure.
So like, the next one I had on my list was, you know, that many people comment all over social media, the Jackson County is gonna receive none of the energy produced in this farm.
Yeah, it, so that's a, that's a really good question. I think there may be oil wells, gas wells here in this county. Do we receive any of that oil?
Oh, I'm, I don't necessarily think it's a good or a bad thing, I just.
So my knowledge of what I know about the way this is gonna work, it's, it's a commodity. And it's gonna be sold into the Southwest Power Pool to the highest bidder. So can Jeffrey Energy Center use some of the electricity? Sure. The, the, the the argument that it's not being used in this community, isn't any different than oil or gas or, so, do you know anybody that raises corn or soybeans in this community? Does it all get eaten here?
No.
No, it gets shipped out, it gets processed and it gets sold to the highest bidder, right? Uh, it's a commodity. I don't control that.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with it. I understand it, but the question comes up. I've seen people say, no, 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 our, our energy rates are gonna go down. No, they're not.
Now, I will tell you, I've had conversations with just general laborers who work at Jeffrey Energy Center. They told, they, they said, you know, it would be kinda nice to have an alternative power source when we need to shut the turbine down to do maintenance or whatever, but, you know. They don't know, you know, that, that, they're, they're just, that's just their comment. And I went, huh, hadn't thought about that.
Yeah, I mean, in the case of some kind of catastrophe worldwide, whatever, it would be nice to be able to divert power to the benefit of Jackson County. You know, I, I think, but, but no, I, I knew that it wasn't coming to Jackson County. But I just think for people to hear.
Sure.
It, and that this is, this is it, you know, so it's not a case of that.
Yeah, it, I can't control any more than where a farmer sends his cattle or where anybody that, you know, produces, um, oil or natural gas, it gets sold, just like any other commodity.
Yeah, you know, probably one of the hottest topics in all of these meetings, and I know you attended both of them.
I did.
Right, is the property rights issue. And the Fifth Amendment's taking clause states, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation, right? And when they talk about property in there, they're not necessarily referring to something just physical or just an address. So if someone was to lose their property value, that would be unfair without just, um, compensation. And you know, this clause safeguards, you know, government overreach is the reason that that, you know, that's in there. Uh, Lawrence Berkey National Labs said that property values will decrease by seven percent. The New York Times ran a study that said it would be twelve percent. Um, these studies suggest there will be a property loss. And I know, I know Next Stair's advertising there won't be. But the national studies are contrary to that. And, um, so what would you like to see happen to ensure that those people are treated fairly?
Now, that, so it's funny, a couple of weeks ago, I was thinking about this. And it just so happened I was on the phone with you and we talked about this. And so I appreciate you bringing it up. I agree. It's not, it's not that much money when you look at the scope and size, that if, if an individual, if we take twelve percent, we say, okay, your property is worth this much and, you know what, we're gonna write you a check for this. Maybe it's an annual check. I mean, I don't know how that process would work, but for sure, I think, I think there are, are own, property owners out there that should get some sort of compensation, even though they're not, they're non-participating. So I have a friend that lives, uh, south of Topeka in another county. They get, they have wind down there. He says, I'm nowhere near a wind turbine, but he says, I get a check every year because wind blows across my property. I go, what? So, so see, to me, it's not, it's not rocket science. It's, it's being a good neighbor, it's, it's figuring out ways to make it equitable for everybody that's impacted.
That's right.
Because I'd be lying to you if I said, um, guy that lives here and a guy that has property over here that owns a home and there's a solar field out there, they're affected. They're affected in what they see. I get that. I told a gentleman, um, that li, that owns some property down there. I said, nowhere in your deed for your property are you, are you entitled to a view? But that's the legal side of it. But yeah, I get it. He doesn't wanna look at that. So is there a way that a large company can say, hey, I, I understand and I empathize with you on this? Here's what we can do for you. Would that make this better? Would that process of compensation be better? Because, um, you know, one of the, one of the landowners, um, that was here last night kind of alluded to that in a way. Um, I was disappointed that somebody booed him.
I, I was as well.
You know, that's, that's not the process. Hearing from each other, um, is important. And listening can be as, as important as talking. But yeah, I'm.
Real, real quick, so I make a public statement on that too, because I think it's really, really important. It's, it's contrary to freedom. It's exactly the opposite. Freedom really is nothing more than accountability. Right? That's really what it comes down to. And so, um, I wanna say, and I hope the guy watches this, that I actually respect him. I respect that he got up there and actually cared about somebody else and I also, um, do not, uh, did not appreciate the booze.
It, this process, Rowdy, it should be just as easy for the participating landowners to come to these meetings as it is the non-participants.
Hundred percent.
But I get it. They don't feel that because of the attacks that they get on social media. And that's not, to me, that's not the way this process in America should work.
I agree with that.
But back to your point about compensation and that, that, that seven to twelve percent. I agree. And for me, that's something that I wanna see put in here. And I told, what did I tell you when we talked? I said, I want you to come in, I want you to talk to the other commissioners about this. I wanna walk through that process and see what we can do. See if that makes it, if we can make that work and get that put in there. If that's a deal breaker, okay.
Then it's a deal breaker, right?
It's a deal breaker.
Yeah, because again, I think property rights have to be absolute. And I, there's no part of property rights or review, unfortunately. I wish it was. I wish I could control my view forever, but it's not. But if you're gonna lose value, that is your property. Right? I mean, that's, that's the way it is.
So, so if somebody builds, um, a, a, a feedlot across from your house and the wind's blowing out of the south every day, that's gonna affect you, right?
Hundred percent.
And so as good neighbors, I would hope we would initiate that conversation before it ever happens. And go, look, is this gonna, how is this gonna affect you?
Yeah, and, and in a case of a hog yard or whatever it was that was in there.
Doesn't matter.
If it did affect my property value, like I don't, I don't necessarily know that smell, I'd have to think on that one, but if it affected my property value, then my property rights have been harmed.
But, but if those calves are out there and they're just being weaned and you got three hundred, four hundred head of calves out there, they bawl for several days. Get them balled out before the, before, and, and if it's in the fall and you like having your windows open. I had, I had a neighbor that complained to me about that.
Okay, yeah.
He, he moved near me and I was weaning calves that fall. I said, it's a process that we go through. I tried to mitigate, I tried to mitigate that by doing fence line. I had my cows right on the other side, so it helped. About three days, they were balled out and everything was good. He goes, but I can't have my windows open.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I have a neighbor, you know him, who lives right across the street from me, who's got a bunch, raises, has a bunch of dogs and, and they keep me up at night sometimes, but you know what, I just deal with it. It's the end of it.
It's, yeah. But that's, that's the thing is, we need to take a look at this when it comes to solar. Again, I've been chewing on this for quite some time. And, and I think it is an important aspect. And, and there'll be people that'll say, no, he, he doesn't give a rat's behind about us. Well, I do.
I think this video clearly shows something different.
Well, I hope so.
You know, in that. Um, so Jeffrey Solar's makes a lot of claims on their advertising. I don't wanna even talk about some of those claims. Um, you know, they talk about a thousand job years, which we know the reason why they use job years is because they're temporary jobs. How many of those jobs do you think will actually come out of Jackson County? Because I, I kinda argue there'll be none.
I, I, I'm not sure there will be either. I really don't.
Well, they're specialized in some way. We don't really have the workforce.
I know a kid that, I know a kid that he used to, he was a wind technician, but, you know. He wasn't from up there. He worked for a company and he traveled up in Iowa, Nebraska.
So bringing, the, the statement of bringing those thousand job years is kind of a silly statement, in my opinion. Because the majority won't stay here. And do you know, will there be any jobs, and if there will, how many post-instruction? You know, I don't know, I haven't seen it.
I don't know. I think there will be some opportunities for local contractors to do some more, I believe. I think there'll be some temporary things where local contractors, uh, excavators, whatever, welders, whatever that may be, I think there'll be some opportunity possibly. I don't know that for a hundred percent, but those are all temporary.
Yeah, and I wanna talk about the economic benefit, because there's gonna be some. But real quick, I wanna finish on tax revenue, just real quick, because I've got a couple of questions. They say twenty-five million in tax revenue for years one to ten, which is two point five million a year. This is their advertisement.
On a five thousand acre.
On.
Five hundred megawatt.
All right, five hundred megawatt, right. Um, they say that it's for, and this is, these, again, I wanna quote them, this is their words, okay? They say, for our local community and region. They do not say for Jackson County. And because the site is twenty-seven miles from Topeka and twenty-eight miles from Holton, I'm sure you guys would agree. At least some percentage of that's gonna go to Shawnee County. Not, not, not all the economic benefit will come, right? They're not gonna shop just in our grocery stores or.
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure. Yeah, you talked about that last night. Yeah, no, I agree. But again, for your listeners and for you, we haven't even begun that conversation of what comes directly to the county. And, and I heard somebody talk about a franchise fee versus payment in lieu of taxes. I'm not an expert on franchise fees, but the payment in lieu of taxes, to me, is the best way to approach this, from what I understand. Because the payment in lieu of taxes will come directly to our treasurer. And here's, here's the thing about that, is, and I told one of our state legislators this a couple of years ago. I said, boy, you guys screwed up when you said, um, we're going to, not him individually, but the legislature in the whole, we're not gonna tax renewable energy. So that opens the door for us to negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes. They don't get in, the state doesn't get any of it. None of it goes to them. So if we can't, if we can't facilitate a payment in lieu of taxes that is equitable for this county to help reduce property taxes, I'm not in favor of it. Obviously, it doesn't make sense. It just, I, I mean, it, at the end of the, it, it just. It just, I mean, at the end of the, it just doesn't make sense.
You know, it's funny. We go all the way back to the beginning of this conversation. We were talking about economic development and all of this stuff. And you know, one of the reasons to do the solar farm would be it would lower, ultimately would lower property taxes, right?
If it doesn't, I'm not in favor of it.
Yeah. Wonderful. And I'm super, super happy to hear that. You know, they go on to say that $108 million will be in years 11 through 30, which is 5.4 million dollars a year. And I know the answer to this question, but because I got this question, I want to ask it to you. So why is there a 2.5 million coming in per year in years one through 10 and 5.4 million coming in according to their? And again, it's not even their numbers. It's the University of Kansas study. Why the difference in the two numbers?
I, I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. But, but just so your listeners understand the process. Once, for me, once zoning and planning is done with there and they come back to our desk. That's when I want to, I want to bring Next Era in here and have the conversation. Of what is, what are the dollars actually coming to us versus a broad number of revenue? Yeah. What you're talking about. Because I think the revenue coming to the county should be one thing. I think revenue going to our fire department is another piece. I think the revenue going into our school districts is another piece. Would you agree?
I totally agree.
I don't want to, I don't want to bring all that in and then go, oh, we're going to dole, dole it out to the appropriate places. They're their own taxing entity. They know what deal you should have an idea of what they're going to need for a building. They need a new building. That's one of the things. It's chump change. To build them a new building and buy them trucks, buy them the pro. It's chump change for them to send those men and women in that department and the surrounding departments. Emmett, I think has one. They're outside of our county, but that's okay. But to send them to training. I shouldn't have to do it. You shouldn't have to do it. They should be initiating that conversation. Here's, I don't know if they've ever showed up to a, a fire district meeting, board meeting. I think they should. Because they should initiate, hey, look folks, we need you to be fully equipped. So if something happens, you can respond to it. It's to their benefit, right?
Yeah. I talked about that last night, a little bit in the speech to say, and I'm glad, I think the planning board's doing a great job. And there are things in the regulations about training, but there's nothing yet about regulation or about equipment. I hope they add that.
Those are all pieces that we need to add into there. But again, public relations for any company that's going to come in here and look at this. Yeah. Go a long ways if they just show up and do it without having to be told to do it, wouldn't it? I shouldn't have to tell them, this is the right thing to do. But it seems like that's what is going to have to happen. And I think they should be fully equipped, especially the districts that are going to respond to those grass fires. Even, even tribal. I think they should look at compensation to the tribe. Because this facility is near them. I, I don't have a problem with that and their fire department.
So do you know, are they going to remove, you probably don't know this yet, but when they go through and build all of this, are they going to get rid of all the native prairie grass and bring in a short grass that burns less? Do you know any of that yet?
I, I don't.
That shows some interest.
I don't know the exact answer to that. I don't believe so. I think there are restrictions to the amount of grading. I think they're going to take brush out when it comes to the creek, creek, creeks, creek, however you want to pronounce it. They're going to leave the trees on those. Again, I don't know these answers for sure, but we're going to get in the weeds on that. And I've been accused of not getting in the weeds earlier on.
It's kind of that time, right?
It's that time. Now is the time. And, and I, from what I looked at in Iowa and what I viewed in Iowa. You would drive down the road and it's, and you talk about good farmland. That's good farmland. And there would be a hedge row, there'd be a creek and there'd be another hedge row and there'd be solar in the middle of where the farmland was. I believe that's what they're going to do here. They're going to control erosion. I mean, it's to their benefit to control erosion, right? The native type grasses that they're going to put back, those need to be specified. Specific on what they're going to put back in there. How they're going to control the brush, how often they're going to control the brush. All those things obviously are going to have to be very specific.
Yeah. And I recognize, which is kind of why I started the conversation with their proposed regulations. They're not regulations yet. Because I know that it's yet to come to you. And I don't know if this is, this might be too early for this question too, you know, but my, probably my single biggest concern about this has to do with the shell company and the, and them actually being able to be liable because, and I hate to, to say this, but I mean, I've used them in business and the reason we've used them is because we wanted to make sure that if something went wrong, the mother company, right? This is why you do it. And then so it's not, it's done every day in business. But I, but my question would have been, do you guys have anything legally binding from them on their expectations? You know, they talk about how, you know, all this revenue and they talk about all of these things, but it's all they're doing is reciting a study. And I know you're probably not there yet, but I would really encourage you guys to put their feet to the fire on that and hold it, hold it contractually.
So one of the things that has been talked about a lot is the whole escrow account. And I'm a firm believer that if, and I'll just use the number 10 million dollars. If that's what it takes to decommission, or if it blows away, you know, in a tornado. There's money set aside to clean that up. Now, I would hope there'd be insurance and verification of insurance to clean up those, those situations if it were to happen. But for me, it's drop dead piece that it, you know, day one, we have that in an escrow account. And you're familiar with escrow.
Super familiar, unfortunately.
And, and each year into this process. We're going to hire an independent engineer or independent firm, whatever that looks like. To give us an idea of what inflation has done. Now you got to add to that. I'm not sure they, they, they'll do that. I don't know the answer to that.
We know the, the Center for Rural Affairs suggests that the decommissioning cost should be 45% of the total cost. I don't know if that's the right number. I'm just saying their number would be that. The other thing is if you guys got that money upfront, you could invest it in something. And probably keep up with inflation and probably have that money sitting there someday and not have to depend on them. Because if you say you have to carry insurance, they go bankrupt, it's over there, you know.
I don't, I don't think in an escrow account, you can do that because it's held by a third party. We don't get it. They don't get it. It's held by.
Oh, you can't invest it?
Right. So we wouldn't be able to invest it. Could that be negotiated to where it's held in, 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 in the third party has the ability to, to invest it? And that's enough to offset inflation? Okay. I, those are, those are questions I don't know the full answer to, but I'm telling you what I do know.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, in my first time I talked, we talked about how they talk about how they need a list of all the past projects. But Jeffrey Solar was formed November 24th of 2024. There is no past project. And so again, that to me throws, for being in business my whole life, that throws huge red flags.
Past projects of a particular company?
Yeah. So it says, and I'll quote, section 31C and 1I state that the corporation must provide certificate of good standing from their state of incorporation and list of past projects wherever located for power. But Jeffrey Solar was formed as an LLC in November 12th of 2024. They don't have any projects.
So we would need to change that. So that any past projects of whatever company is coming in here to build this facility, we have that information.
I'd really encourage you guys to tighten up that, that bond between Next Era and, and, you know, Jeffrey Solar just to again, to kind of, you know, kind of protect the company. Also, I don't know how much you guys have done research on, but I would also encourage you guys to go back and look at the past history. Cause there's a lot of past history that we can get. I know you've, which I was so proud of you that you actually spoke to the commissioners in Nemaha County, because they've had some dealings. How cool is that? Keep, keep doing that. It's a really good thing.
Yeah. And, and the, the folks in Iowa, they were helpful in their project and how they approached their project. It's harder for a small county to do some of this. That's why it's taken so long. It, it just, you know, we've got a, we don't have the personnel that a, a large county in Iowa would have to handle things like that. They have a bank of attorneys, you know, that kind of thing.
Um, I've really got two more, or three more sections I want to talk about briefly, because we, it's been neat. We've kind of covered all of them through our conversation a lot. I want to talk about just safety for a little bit. And I know you, and you agree that the fire departments need adequately equipped. We, we agreed next. Economic Times headline reads Chinese kill switches found in US solar projects. MSN, Fox, many companies reported on this. And just this week, I don't know if you read in the news, but a Chinese lithium battery system took down the South Korean intelligence agency. They just turned up the voltage and melted it down. So my question to you is, is national security a concern? And should it be a concern when you go through this project? And if, and will you consider it as you guys are going through?
For sure. I mean, can these be built here in the US? Are there companies that are building them here in the US that don't have that capability?
Certainly the inverters. As far as the solar panels go, there are, there are companies down like in Texas, but could they create the, the, the mass number that's needed? I don't know. But I know there are, there are American solar companies and there are.
So that's a question that I think we need an expert to come in and talk about. How do we prevent that? How do we protect against that?
Yeah. And, and again, just don't let it be their expert. Let it be someone third party and we'll actually look into it. Cause the threat's very, very real. I know from my line of work, there's transformers, there's all kinds of things they've found kill switches in. This is all over the news. It's not conspiratorial. Just Google it. It's everywhere. So I would be concerned about that if I was you guys. Last, last two items on my list really are, I want to talk a little bit about legacy. And you know, two, two Thursdays ago, 208 people showed up. Last night, at its peak, that I counted was 123. That came through there. Last night there was, the only people that, that spoke for it were the Next Era reps. Every other speech that went on was either negative or neutral. Okay. There was one landowner. But he really talked a lot about other property rights and he's, I don't know really where to put him. Which again, is another reason why I respect the guy. I'd love to sit down and talk to him. But anyway, and in the first meeting, there was eight that were for it, three Next Era reps and 45 who were opposed. What did you take away from these meetings? What did you get out of it? Cause I watched you and you paid attention the whole time.
Right. Took notes. I'm not, I'm not going to clap for or against.
I understand why.
And, and that's just, you know, I'm just there to listen. But I think the, one of the takeaways that I had was I was disappointed in the amount of participating people who didn't show up. There's a lot of them. Part of me went, okay, if this really means that much to you, show up and fight for it. Not physically. Get show up and, and speak in favor of it. Talk about it. Why it's important to your family. You know, I know there's some folks who are, are farmers in that area that have leased some of their properties, a small piece of it. And the amount of revenue that will inject into their farming operation is huge. So come talk about that. Personalize it, you know? Share about your family and your history there and what it means. But I was, I honestly, I was disappointed. I was like, really?
Was any part of you happy that there was at least, there was turnout? That there was people involved?
For sure. It, that's the way the process is supposed to work. Planning, meetings, people show up as long as they're respectful and, and state their position. And talk about this. That's the way this process is supposed to, to work. And if we make changes, I don't mind putting together more meetings where the public can come in and, and talk about these.
How is it that we, as a county, can have more of this kind of conversation? Cause one of the problems is you get into these, and I know you guys are restricted by rules and this stuff, but you get in and it's, you know, the other day I was in here and, you know, I had a comment I wanted to make, but I wasn't on the agenda, so I couldn't. This is what's healthy.
It is.
I learned stuff here today. I did not know.
So part of the process, part of the problem is, I don't know if it's problem. Our meetings on Monday are a business meeting. We're here to digest and take care of business and get it done in a timely and efficient way. There was a gentleman that showed up. And he wanted to raise his hand. He wasn't on the agenda. He didn't understand how the process worked. So taking the time to just explain that process. And I think at one point, if you go back and look at the, the video of it. I, I, I can't remember if I told him in the meeting or afterwards, I said, you have to understand. If there was 20 of you in here and 19 of you kept raising your hand, we'd never get the business. You understand that. And he was like, oh, okay. I get it. So I gave him my business card. I said, here's my cell phone number. Call me. I'll answer anything you want. After the meeting adjourned, we sat out here on the porch for 30 to 45 minutes. And I said, you can ask me anything you want. Kind of like what you're doing. And, and we talked. He was cool, good with it. And I tried to explain the process in the way the meeting runs. Back to your original question.
Yeah. Cause you can't do that with 500 people.
You can't. As chair, I would love to, and we used to, if somebody, a taxpayer or somebody came in and said, hey, if you guys aren't in the middle of something, can you answer a question, road concern, whatever that may be? We're small enough that I'd love to be able to do that. But unfortunately, that doesn't work anymore.
Well said, by the way.
And I think you understand.
Exactly what you mean. Yeah.
I don't like that process, this process. So Rowdy sticks his head in and says, hey, I'm upstairs willingly paying your property taxes.
Willingly. Oh, yeah.
And you go, hey, I got a quick question out here. I love stopping and going, or if we were, if we had somebody who was on the agenda, hey, give us five minutes or whatever it's going to take. Have a seat. We'll catch, we'll catch you in a few. That to me is fall town, the way it ought to work.
It is how it ought to work. And you know, with the meeting that I was in here, I didn't even have a question when I came in here. It was the conversation that spawned the question. I'm like, well, I can actually help with this. But anyway, doesn't matter. But I would really encourage the, the commission, the planning boards to keep the public engaged. I think it's a wonderful thing. But also I want to make sure I, I say, I think it's also important to note Keith, that we elect you guys to do a job and we need to let you do that job. And whether you're buying new, this is just me speaking again, I will get heat for this. Whether you buy new equipment or used equipment, that's your guys' business. You're here to manage, manage the county. But on the flip side of that, when something gets so big and so divisive and it's so much money and all of that. This is where the public, I think, needs to get involved and needs to have, to have their say, you know, heard not whether we're buying a new snowplow or a used one. I mean, that's just my personal opinion, but.
I wish, I wish we would have had enough people that we would have had to move it to the whole high school gym. We talked about that. I wish more people who, I wish there were some of the people that I talked to who go, it's not near me. I really don't care. Wrong.
Wrong.
You should care. You should be at those meetings and you should ask those questions. Now that's their right to go out of sight, out of mind, right? But I wish we would have had enough people to fill the gym. Because then you get a broader opinion of the direction planning should go and the direction commission should go. I want to hear from people in white in America or white Kansas. And what are your thoughts?
I think, you know, there've, there've been talks amongst, you know, the people that I know and hang out with that about, we should do our own town hall meeting and invite the commissioners to where we don't have to have the three minutes. We don't have to have those kinds of rules. And if we, I think we could fill a gymnasium with enough time, you know, to advertise and get it out there and, and do that. And yeah, so Keith, I really got one, one, two, two questions left over that I purposely put at the end for you. Which is, no, these are, these are going to be the easiest ones of all of them we said all night long. What, question number one, what makes you most excited about this project?
What makes me most excited? I think the, the only thing that excites me about it is the possibility of being able to lower property tax. I mean, if it was a Walmart distribution center or any kind of manufacturing. It would be, what excites me is what it would bring to this community to help lower property tax. Generate more revenue to create a better living condition for the people who live here. That's it in that show.
Yeah. And I fibbed a little bit. I have two more. But anyway, one more, this one was, what, what's your biggest concern about the project?
Boy, that's, you know, that's an easy question.
By the way, these two questions came from a 10-year-old.
That's great. My biggest concern about this project is the divide. is the divisiveness against neighbor against neighbor.
Yeah.
And people who normally would have waved at each other and now they won't. I hate that.
Yeah, me too.
I don't like that at all. Um, I don't like the fact that, again, this goes back to being able to have a, if I disagree with you, uh, you shouldn't feel like the only thing you can do is villainize me.
Yeah.
That doesn't go anywhere with me.
Yeah.
It, it puts a wall up.
Yep.
But when you have a conversation with me and I believe that you have some flexibility, then I can have a conversation with you and then I listen better. But when you call me names and, and get on social media or in the Holt recorder and you, you say all kinds of things that, that just aren't true.
Yeah.
And you use these, and I've said this before, you use the words, I believe, I think, it appears, I've been told, rumor mill.
Yeah.
Boy, wall goes up. I don't want to hear from you anymore. I really don't.
Yeah.
Because I don't do that to you.
Yeah.
But I do want to hear from people.
Yeah.
But it's got to be what we're doing right here.
Yeah.
And there's got to be some flexibility that it's not just your way.
Right, right.
But yeah, the, the, the thing that concerns me the most is there's some relationships that probably will never be fixed.
I know people who are really angry.
They are. And yeah, I don't like that.
I, I don't either. And I try to tell them, you just get involved. And at the end of the day, if your, if your story, if your idea, if your theory is right, it will stand.
Yeah.
And if it don't, it won't.
Right.
Um, I skipped this question, I did not mean to.